Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the Tuesday, July 19th, 2022, 6:00 PM School Board Meeting to order. If everyone would rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge and the National Anthem. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Roll call.
Janet McDonald.
Jill Woolbright.
Cheryl Messero. Colleen Conklin, present.
Trevor Tucker.
Kathy Middlestat.
Everyone is present and accounted for. Do we have any proclamation, resolution, or legislative updates today?
No, sir.
In that case, we're going to move on to our spotlights this evening. They're five minutes apiece. The first spotlight is the Superintendent's Strategic Plan. Ms. Middlestat.
Thank you, Chair. Public, we do have a strategic plan. We have six goals that our team honors and strives to fulfill each and every year. We have goal leads that represent each one of these six different areas. Our goals are academics, educational equity, social and emotional well-being, talent, operational efficiencies, and communication. As we close out this school year, this was our first year with this strategic plan that our board adopted last year. Each one of our goal leads is going to come forward this evening and just share one celebration that we accomplished with our strategic plan as our driving force and as it relates to last year. So, Ms. Moore, if you want to get us started, please.
Absolutely. Goal one, that addresses the increase of academic achievement and core subject areas for students as identified through state and progress monitoring assessments. I am excited to share that overall learning gains and learning gains by students in the lowest quartile increased from the previous year.
Good evening, Board Chair, Superintendent members. So, we're excited to share for goal three, which is social and emotional well-being. Essentially, we provided a structured framework for improving social, emotional well-being throughout the school, community, and district. And our specific strategy was to establish systems and processes for re-engaging students and monitoring school culture. We're super excited that through our diligent efforts of our social workers, we were able to identify, locate, and to support 159 out of 170 students who did not transition back to us after the 1920 school year. So, we were super excited about that.
Good evening, Chair and Superintendent and Board members. Goal four is about talent, and it is the recruitment and the retention of our employees. And so, we're so excited to share tonight that on this agenda, tonight's agenda, we have over 30 employees, brand-new teachers, that we are hiring and the board will be voting on, that will be working with our students for this upcoming school year. So, we're working towards completing this goal.
Good evening, Board. Chairman Tucker, Superintendent Middlestat. I represent the operational goal five, which is operational efficiency. And this goal focuses on how we operate efficiently and effectively to optimize our resources that support teaching and learning. And we are happy to praise one of our teams as the operational efficiency team has food service and transportation and plant services, among many that are supporting this goal. But our food service this last year, we were able to provide meals to our students and build back our fund balance despite the many challenges and staffing and absenteeism that we have and the continued supply chain disruptions and increasing expenses. So, we're happy that we are back and we're going to make this year, next year, a much better year.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jason Wheeler, and I, for part six, is Communications in our strategic plan. And our celebration is that we also had kind of rolled in community engagement. And so, what we've been able to do is re-establish some of our community engagement events. For instance, our Back to School Jam, which is August 6th this year, by the way. We had it last year as well. We also had the return of our Summer Camp and Activity Showcase. And many of our providers spoke to us after that and said that they really appreciated having that outreach opportunity once again, and they saw increased numbers. So, that's just one great thing we've been able to do over the past year. Thank you.
I'd like to thank each of those goal leads for sharing this evening. And Board, we look forward to our conversation that we'll have in August as we talk about strategic, targeted, intentional efforts that we want to put forward with your feedback regarding our next school year as we get ready to stand up some opportunities for our students and our employees that are just going to be over the top. Our focus next year is on culture and climate, and we're really excited about what we're going to do and bring forward excellence in Flagler schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Middlestat. Our next spotlight this evening is 3.02. Emma Loves Canines founder, Emma Stanford, is she here? Oh, perfect.
I am not Emma, but I will introduce her. Emma Stanford is a Flagler school student. I remember, her mom and I were talking. I met her when I was at News 13, probably 12 years ago. She was not this tall back then. Exactly. Emma, as many of you know, started, Emma Loves Canines in partnership with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, has done a tremendous amount of work with FCSO, supporting the canine unit there. All that work helped bring Governor DeSantis to Flagler County last month to help support the Care for Canine bill, which he signed here, provide support for retiring canines. So, I will step out of the way and just, by the way, Emma's going to FPC next, this upcoming year because, you know, Bulldogs. So, that was almost a given. But let her explain what she does and just how proud she was to pay a small part in bringing the governor here. So, Emma, all yours.
I founded Emma Loves Canines when I was 11 years old during my search for a dog for myself. I was able to meet the sheriff's canine unit thanks to the generosity of Sheriff Staley. After discovering the plushies and with Sheriff Staley's approval, I began to fundraise for the working police dogs. As soon as I learned about the lack of funding for retired police dogs, I wanted Emma Loves Canines to assist the handlers with the food and medical expenses. When I heard that Mr. Killer Brew had introduced the bill to support retired canine dogs, I knew I had to reach out to him. I wanted to help pass the bill in any way I could.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to get a photograph.
Emma, before we do the photo, though, can you tell people how they can support Emma Loves Canines?
You can go to emmalovescanines.com, and for a $25 donation, you can get a plushie that represents a real working dog in Flagler County.
A plushie.
Yeah. Emma, put you right here. There, right there. There you go, right there. Emma, step this way real quick. There you, perfect, right there. All right. Here we go. And one, two, three. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I was with Emma when she was in fourth grade, and Mr., at the time, I think it was Sergeant Welker, came in with canine jacks. And it started a new way of Emma relating to dogs because she had been afraid of them until then. And the love affair she has for dogs now and other dogs and every dog inspired this wonderful opportunity. Not only that, but her appreciation for the canine unit and the officers that are involved in that helps so many. And what I was really impressed with, though, is that she helped to write the legislation that made a difference for this. And that's really purposeful and wonderful work that our kids in Flagler schools do. So, thank you, Emma, for not only caring, but then working through so everybody in this state, everyone who has a canine program can take advantage of this opportunity. So, kudos. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our last spotlight this evening is our 21, 22 retirees. Ms. Johnson?
Chairman Tucker and Board members and Superintendent Middlestat, as exciting as it is to celebrate people at the front end of their career, it's just as exciting to celebrate those that have reached a vocational pinnacle of their career. And so, they are headed to good times and great health and all of those things that we can all get excited about. And so, we are just so fortunate to have 38 retirees this year, this fiscal year, that we are celebrating tonight. And so, for the public and for the board, there will be a list of all 38 of these retirees loaded into board docs so that you can see each and every name. But tonight, among us are some of them, and we had a celebration and a little food and beverage upstairs, non-alcoholic. And we want to celebrate them tonight and just have them come forward so that you can see them and applaud all of their work and their service to this district. And so, with no further ado, I would just like to introduce them. They're going to take their walk all the way down to the front, and we're going to applaud. So, we're going to start tonight with Ms. Paula Chaney. Where are you, Ms. Chaney? Is she not standing? Okay, all right. All right, she snuck out the back door. She said, "I'm ready to retire right now." And then Rebecca Stauffer. Ms. Stauffer. We're also celebrating Cheryl Andrews with 16 years of service. Come on down, Ms. Andrews. You all come in the front, all the way. And then Eileen Curran with 35 years of service. Mr. John Seaton, 18 years of service. We applaud you. And then we had two others. They have gone to go ahead and start their retirement. It was Janice Gilyard and Louise McCourty. So, but if you would and you don't mind, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you for all you do, all you've done.
Here we go. On three, say rocking chair. One, two, three. There you go. Congratulations.
Congratulations to the retirees. Have a safe drive home. And next, we're moving on to Approval of Minutes Board. We have minutes from the meeting of June 7th, 2022, 3:00 PM, the Agenda Workshop, the June 8th, 2022, 9:00 AM Special Meeting, June 21st, 2022, 1:00 PM Information Workshop, June 21st, 2022, 6:00 PM Regular Meeting, and June 30th, 2022, 9:00 PM Special Meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes? In that case, those minutes will stand as they are presented. Superintendent, Board members, are there any additions or changes to the agenda that you'd like to do this evening?
I have none.
Seeing none from the board, next, we're going to go into public comment. So, for the public, you have three minutes to speak. Please adhere to the three minutes. Please do not use any profanity. Please do not hold up any signs. Please do not clap or boo. With these, I expect everyone to be polite and courteous. And with that, we'll read off your name. Please come forward. You'll have three minutes and go from there.
First speaker tonight is Suzanne Johnson regarding the Flagler Youth Orchestra.
Welcome. Good evening. My name is Suzanne Johnston, and I'm here in a personal capacity, except for when we have the tip jars on the counter collecting money for the Flagler Youth Orchestra. And the public is so supportive and so complimentary of the whole program. And these are regular people coming in, pay taxes, renew their driver's license. The public is supportive. My mother, Suzanne Born, was a huge supporter of the Flagler Youth Orchestra. She attended many concerts and contributed financially to the program. My mother taught school in the Flagler County School System for many years. Back in the 60s and 70s, you could make kids listen. You could make kids behave back then. One thing that really impressed her was, in a concert, was the behavior of these kids. You could hear a pin drop on the stage with hundreds of kids there. There was no fidgeting. They behaved 100% perfect behavior. She was so impressed, she must have told me this 100 times. I'm sure each of you are aware of the benefits of music and art in the school, but also, I'd like to add, it helps the kids understand how to act in public, how to sit quietly, how to sit and listen. It's a true learning process for these kids. It's a huge benefit. My mother would say to you that you should fully support the Flagler Youth Orchestra 100% and not take away funding or benefits. In fact, Mama was so impressed with the Flagler Youth Orchestra, we had them play the quartet at her funeral. So, please increase the funding 100%. You should increase it 150%. It is such a benefit to these students. It's a minimal cost and a huge benefit for the kids, the teachers, and the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no clapping. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no clapping, there's no cheering or applauding because there's also no booing. So, please just let people speak, and that's all we can do, okay? Next speaker.
Edward Fuller, Youth Orchestra.
Honorable Chair Tucker, honorable Colleen Conklin, honorable Chair Messero, honorable Jill Woolbright, honorable Janet McDonald, Kathy Middlestat, God bless you, Kristy Gavin, same to you. And please don't start. I just wanted just to, I said honorable, and I meant that. And I want to say one thing to the kids here tonight. As a father and a grandfather, I've seen your performances. I cry every time I see them. Why? I have two grandchildren. They're hopefully, well, they're gonna, it's not hopefully, they're going to be part of the Flagler Youth Orchestra. Why? It is transformative. So, I want to say thank you to this board, and I want to commend you for the 17 years of doing the right thing, for having a quintessential program where the state of Florida can copy. Where do you get that in Flagler? I'm just saying. We should have a banner lining the streets saying we have a Flagler Youth Orchestra. I defy anybody to say, "There's one better." That's a fact. You quote me, that's fine. I'll stand to that. And you all deal with data. So, my opinion is just like everybody else's, it's maybe even less. But in 2019, in Educational Psychology Today, students who take music, and I know you know this, they improve dramatically in math, science, and English. That's a fact. That's not my opinion. Why is that study valid? It was peer-reviewed. 110,000 students took part in that from the British Columbia University. Look it up. It's valid. That's why you funded it for 17 years, and that's why you're going to fund it for 18 years. I believe that. I know that. And I want to commend you for that. And I know Chairman Tucker said, "Don't applaud," but I applaud you for this. I really do, all of you. Because it's all about the kids and opportunity. 60% or 65% of our families here are reduced to free lunches because they're economically disadvantaged. What does music do? It transforms them. It gives them an opportunity that their parents, their grandparents, their single mother, their single father, their single grandparent can't afford. And what do they do? They're launched at Indian Trails Middle School. That's the launching pad. And when they come over to Flagler Auditorium, I think we need to change it to Starship Flagler Auditorium, because that's where they perform a miracle. And it never ceases to amaze me when you first hear them at the beginning, then you hear them at the end, I guess it's the Spring Concert. It's like, it's transformational. The kids are just absolutely precious. And education is about opportunity, and I know you all get that. So, I want to applaud you, and I want to commend you. And there's no doubt in my mind you're going to fund this because schools, you know, you feed the kids, you instruct the kids, but the FYO schools, it's food for the souls of these kids. And I want to end with Maya Angelou because I love her, the pieces. If I can find her quote. You'd think I'd remember it by now. "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." And I tell you what, this school board's going to make at least 200 kids that I know feel real proud to be in Flagler County. Thank you and God bless you. And I'm sorry, I went over. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Brooke Jones regarding Flagler Youth Orchestra.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a parent of a Flagler Youth Orchestra student, and this program is an outstanding program. She's been on the program since the first year she was eligible at eight years old and has been playing viola for five years this coming fall. She's a member of the Harmony Chamber Orchestra and the FYO Quartet and is a rising eighth grader here in Flagler County. She has earned her spot in these two groups by committing to the hard work of learning her instrument and the skill of honing her craft. 83% of studies conducted on the benefits of music and musical education have been done in the last 13 years. 235 studies and counting and peer-reviewed and published scholarly journals show that music improves every aspect of a student's life, from test scores to math to graduation rates. Music is also a stress release for our students. If the last two years have not shown us what stress does to our children, I don't know what does. The orchestra program has been able to keep going. They did it through Zoom, they've gotten together when they've been able to, and those kids have continued to thrive. More than that, it offers a sense of achievement for our children without tearing anyone else down. As the gentleman before me just spoke, when you walk into the auditorium in November, those kids sitting on stage picked up an instrument after Labor Day, and they're going to play for you. And then come back in April when we have our last concert and stay for the whole thing. Look at the little kids who started in September. Keep in mind, one week of Thanksgiving, two weeks of Christmas, a week of spring break, and how many other days do the kids have off? And look at what they've learned. Stay for the rest of the performance, see what the next level has learned and the level after that. No one else teaches that in these schools. There's no other programs. We continue to take from our kids, and we shouldn't be doing that. We should be giving. We should be supporting this program. We should be causing it to grow. We should put St. John's County on their heels. They can't build schools fast enough. They can't add programs and educators fast enough. Why can't we be a viable alternative to people wanting to move to St. John's? We continue to take programs like this from our kids, more people will continue to move north and not here. Have a nice night.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Victor Rivera regarding Flagler Youth Orchestra.
Hello. I don't know who to say your honors or any of that, so I apologize ahead of time.
We don't care.
I'm one of the orchestra conductors of Flagler Youth Orchestra, a very proud organization that I'm privileged to be part of. And one of the reasons why I'm here, I don't know if you know this, I don't even live in this county. I drive an hour away just to come here and work with these kids, these lovely bunch of students, and then the faculty, which I swear has given to me a lot more than I've ever given to any of them. I'm a retired combat veteran. I'm 100% disabled. I'm a college professor. I teach both at Rawlins and BCU, of which now in my life I've decided not to teach anymore in those institutions. This is the only place, other than pro-orchestras, where I work because of these fantastic students. Because I remember being in a situation myself where my violin got repoed because my parents couldn't afford it. I remember where a world-renowned violinist, Dr. Alvaro Gomez, calls my house and says, "I want Victor Louis Rivera to be my student." And my father had to tell him, "We can't afford you." I remember having to beg for a scholarship to be at Stetson Youth Orchestra. I remember all these things. And all these people stepped up and helped me the way I'm trying to help these kids. I mean, for me, it started off with Deborah Danzby Wells, eventually was Dr. Hruto Kromovich, eventually was Dr. Alvaro Gomez. And then I got scholarships to almost every school I wanted to go to and conservatory. And it wasn't because I had money, it was because I had good people that loved me. And that's what we have here. I can't tell you how many times backstage, I literally tell my coworkers, "I can't believe I get to come to a place where I love and respect everyone I work with." Watching Cheryl literally kill herself, watching Mr. C have to program all the pieces for all the students and listen to every audition and all the many thousands of things that we do. All I want is for you guys to understand that these kids need us. And honestly, in my case, I need them too. Okay? I have gotten better because of them, both as a teacher and as a human, and I'm privileged to be here. And I hope you will help us continue helping these kids become whatever it is they want to become. They deserve that from us. They need that from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Sean DeVore, Flagler Youth Orchestra.
Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I'll be short, I'll be brief. I've been a parent in this county for 20 years. I've had kids that have been in the school system for the same amount of time. I've had basketball taken away from my kids, Girl Scouts. Now, we're trying to take away Flagler youth. I don't understand. I mean, if it's funding, it just makes no sense to me. I mean, school is supposed to be a safe haven, free. We talk about protecting our kids. It's the one thing they can do that they don't get bullied. In basketball, when I coached basketball, they bullied. Girl Scouts are treated unequal. This is one place they can feel safe. The teachers care about them. The parents care. And I just, I don't understand why we're here. I mean, basketball, football, all these other sports things, never have a problem getting money. Everywhere I go, sports is number one. I don't understand it. What is the percentage? You know, how much does it really help them? You know, I played sports in school, had a chance to go to college for sports. I chose the military instead. I feel that life skills from this program are unbelievable. And to condemn this would be a travesty. So I'm just up here asking that you guys really think hard and long. I mean, seventeen years this program has survived through everything. Ms. Cheryl works hard. The program works hard. The teachers work hard. They're underpaid, understaffed, and we still managed to make it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker?
Stanley Gatzick, FYO.
Good evening, board. My name is Stanley Gatzick, and I've been a member of the Flagler Youth Orchestra for seven years. This program has been a major forefront in my life, and it's shaped me into the person I am today. I truly do not believe I would be as academically successful as I am today without the Flagler Youth Orchestra. It's taught me independence, leadership, and the skills needed to master anything I set my focus on. The program and instructors have enadled me to make the bass my voice through its amazing educational fundamentals. Please vote to keep the Flagler Youth Orchestra in this county as it has benefited me as much as it will benefit other students in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Stanley.
Please no clapping. Next speaker?
Cheryl Trugio, Youth Orchestra.
Good evening, everybody. My personal being and my personal reason to be here tonight is I have a special needs daughter. She was having a real struggle. I've been in front of several of you when she was this big. Now she's this big. When my daughter started with orchestra with Cheryl, she was probably about seven or eight years old, couldn't read the written word at all. I had been fighting with Heritage Academy that closed down. We went to the charter school, the Russian Charter School, don't even remember the name. It closed down. So she was shuffled many years. She went into the orchestra, and this child blossomed. She became sitting first chair in her first orchestra at the auditorium. She ended up there at the end of the year. And several of the other people have talked about the transformation from these kids starting in September and then finishing in April and May. I don't know how many of you have been to any of the orchestras, but to go there will give you literal goosebumps. You will cry. Because these kids, you see all of them sitting here. They're all in their black uniforms. They all have respect. They all have a demeanor that you won't see coming out of football, out of all of the other sports that do get all the funding. I don't even understand why this is a conversation. Why all of us had to come here to fight for something that is so good and so transformational in our students? I just find hypocrisy, and I'm sorry, I mean that in a respectable way. But to take what is doing such a good thing for so many students, even for us to be possibly talking about losing this program is to me just bewildering, very honestly. We all pray and hope that everybody does the right thing this evening so that these kids can go on to graduate, get scholarships, and entertain us as we grow older with them. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Next speaker?
Diana Kenji Alosi, Flagler Youth Orchestra.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diana Kenji Alosi, and I'm about to start my senior year at Matanzas High School. For someone my age, I'm very active in my school. I just finished the eighth program. I'm working on finishing my associate. I'm in Key Club Best Buddies Marching Band Choir, and the list keeps going. But all my activities, I'm proud just to say I'm part of the Flagler Youth Orchestra. I'm starting, going to be starting my tenth year on the violin thanks to Ms. Cheryl and all the amazing teachers. I drive hours every week to come teach me how to play. As I've mentioned, I've been starting my tenth year, meaning I've already been playing for nine. And as a seventeen-year-old, that is more than half my life dedicated to learning how to play the violin. To be quite frank, it's more than most people have ever spent in a relationship their entire life. And I'm just a teenager. And now by you guys not supporting the orchestra, you're potentially causing a term I'm sure most people are familiar with, divorce, between me and my love of music. As courageous, innovative leaders in education, Flagler Schools will be nation's primary learning organization where all students graduate as socially responsible citizens with the skills necessary to reach their maximum potential. If you highly respected and listed officials didn't know, this is your vision statement. And clearly you all need your yearly eye exam because you're not fulfilling your visions. Thanks to Ms. Cheryl, I've expanded my musical capabilities to a total of fifteen different instruments. If it wasn't for her, many children who have taken this stellar program wouldn't have been able to come to the realization that this is what they want to do for the rest of their lives. Also, according to every single major medical journal, us musicians are the only people who can stimulate both sides of the brain, which is very helpful toward brain development. And as a school board, that's something that should kind of stick out to you guys. Our school board is the only one, is one of the only ones in the state of Florida that doesn't have a string program offered in our schools. Thanks to Ms. Cheryl, she has created such an opportunity. Now you want to not support this safe haven and this educational outlet to her children to learn how to play string instruments. Ms. Cheryl has done more than just to provide for me and other students with opportunities to learn how to play instruments. She's provided us a home. This amazing woman has done so many inspiring things over the years to keep this program going. She knows almost every single student by name, and she helps us grow not only musically but as a person. With all the personal things that she's dealt with and all the challenges with COVID, us getting kicked out of our normal classrooms, she's still been able to provide us with opportunities to perform. Our program isn't destructive. It's children going out of their way two hours a week for lessons, out of the way from hanging out with friends, going to clubs, and participating in sports. By not supporting this educational experience, where are students going like us to be able to learn how to play these instruments for free? I am thankful and the generosity for the sport you have been providing over the years. But now that this program, having so many children and us working so hard in our classes, to add more of a struggle? I mean, the classes, I mean, playing these instruments take more brain power than the need of common sense to support this fabulous program. As a student who's been in Flagler Schools since 2009, I've seen a lot of things you guys have done for us scholars. Some things I didn't agree with and some things I'm thankful for. But if you were to close down this program, you'd be limiting the education of over two hundred kids. It's trifling and atrocious. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Edith Campanz, Youth Orchestra.
I've been coming to these meetings for a few months. I came when the members of the board were advocating against masks and vaccines in the face of the facts that proved that their positions were wrong. I came again when members of the board were advocating the banning of books based on their ideology and their rights for all. I came again when the same members of the board forced a good and competent teacher to leave just when we need teachers the most. I'm here again today because once again, the same ideologues are now going after the Youth Orchestra, a program that has been part of the school system here for seventeen years and has served hundreds of students. But Board Member Janet McDonald said she has promised-
I'm sorry, ma'am, you can't use individuals' names, please.
Okay, with the equity of the program. Aside from the irony of the use of the word equity, if you follow that logic, let's eliminate the school programs where all students don't participate. Like football, advanced play programs, special education programs for disabled children. You get the idea. I think we all know the real reason why the same two board members are going after all the Youth Orchestra, and it has nothing to do with the welfare of the students and everything to do with pushing their political agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Just a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, please address your comments to the board chair or the board in general, but not any individual board members. Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Rayanne Trugio, Youth Orchestra. Next speaker is Alexander Ortiz Valdez, FYO.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you guys today. I was not planning on doing this, but here I am. So I got a letter. I'm speaking on behalf of Dr. Washington Garcia, the Dean of the School of Music at Stetson University in support of Flagler Youth Orchestra, and I will read his message. "To whom it may concern, I would like to express my full support to the Flagler Youth Orchestra. My career in all facets, including performance, teaching, and administration, has prepared me to understand and appreciate exceptional ensembles such as the FYO. This group exemplifies the kind of creative, energetic, and impactful ensemble that any institution wants to have. I was born and raised in Ecuador, a developing country where the presence of youth orchestras not only changed my life, but allowed me to understand the power that music has in developing the brain and academic abilities of children. As a son of a renowned neurosurgeon, I not only experienced music through my formal training at the National Conservatory of Music, but also through my father's experience using music as a healing power. It is because of this background that I created Nebraska's Medical Orchestra so that doctors, nurses, and pre-med students could use this as a channel to manage stress and decrease suicide rates. The pandemic had a huge impact in our society, and as we continue to rebuild, it is more crucial than ever to support ensembles such as the Flagler Youth Orchestra so that we can not only support mental wellness in young artists, but also provide them with tools that are going to help them to be more successful in school. We know from a number of recent and older studies that the act of making music facilities high levels of cognitive function, including complex problem-solving, logical reasoning, as well as conceptual tasks. Research has shown that musicians have a highly developmental system, as you probably know. Youth Orchestra has created an important foundation for our education system, and it is my understanding that the FYO will organize an ensemble that provides its members with opportunities and unique value. Our programs at Stetson are recognized through their excellence at the national level, and missions into our schools are done through rigorous audition process, and I am thrilled that the FYO continues to educate and prepare these students at a high level of artistry which allows them to enjoy success during their auditions. As an advocate and former board member of the Omaha Area Youth Orchestras, I can unconditionally and without reservations say that the FYO is a gem that needs and deserves our support. Please do not hesitate to contact me if I can provide additional information so the Flagler Youth Orchestra can continue to fulfill their mission to make the community a better place for the future generation of artists as well as all citizens. Sincerely, Dr. Washington Garcia. Thank you."
Thank you. Next speaker?
Sidney Wong, Flagler Youth Orchestra.
Good evening, members of the Flagler County School Board. My name is Sidney Wong. I'm a rising dual-enrolled A senior at Matanzas High School, and I've lived my entire seventeen years in Flagler County. The Flagler Youth Orchestra has been a part of my life for the past eight years. Through recent events, I was moved to write a poem which encapsulates how music enriches my life as well as others' lives, and why the orchestra should continue to be funded by the county. It is named "A World Without Music." A world without music, what world would that be? When it is a catalyst, a spark for creativity. With a lack of songs and tunes, our history would be changed, and many from their lives and passions estranged. To explain, music is a melody produced by instruments which are played, and an instrument is mastered by a daring soul and afraid. However, the journey of learning an instrument is far from what one would expect. If you've ever attempted to play one, I'm sure the art you'd respect. One must learn basics such as notes, clefs, keys, and tempo. Forte, piano, intonation, you get the memo. Despite strenuous rigor, learning the plays unlike any pastime or sport due to the beauty and acceptance that one should not thwart. The beauty of learning an instrument is so based in inclusion that no group would ever be forgotten in seclusion. Music applies to those of all genders, disabilities, and current skill. In areas where another pastime would fall short, it fulfills. Excerpts full of emotion can put a genuine smile on one's face, bridging the gap of culture, ethnicity, and race. No matter how short or tall, young or old, the skill can be attained and a new passion can unfold. Music unites people from all walks of life and all ages. So why then should it be dependent on a family's wages? I asked my mother this question. Would you have let us learn instruments if you were to pay? To which she replied blunt, "No," and it wouldn't be any other way. This, to me, is proof that if families simply could not afford, then their children may miss out on a potential skill to work toward. I encourage you to recall one tuner's song that through your journey of life has helped you along. Now imagine if sadly that song did not exist. What in life would have passed you by and you have missed? From beloved TV show melodies to our own national anthem, music is engraved in our culture and shouldn't be demanded ransom. As a scholar who has been a part of FYO for over eight years, the thought of many young children unable to partake provokes tears. Through this very program, I've met amazing teachers and friends. When compared to other school programs, this orchestra transcends. Being a part of an orchestra and of something much greater has imparted lessons on my life I'll carry on much later. This is why such a thing deserves to be equal opportunity. It enriches the lives of young children as well as our community. To explain, a world without music is as a canvas without color, with potential to be bright but is truly much duller. I hope you now understand the blessing that is music, you see. As a world without music, it's a world that simply would not be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Gabrielle Wong, FYO.
Good evening. My name is Gabrielle Wong. I'm an IB graduate from FPC. I'm currently a chemical engineering student at Georgia Tech, and I wanted to share my experience as an alumni of the Flagler Youth Orchestra. I started FYO in third grade and saw its completion through my senior year of high school. I was active in the program for a whole decade, ten years, making it the longest local program I attended out of all my extracurriculars. And it was through this program that I was introduced to the beauty of music. FYO was my first and most influential experience with music. The teachers are supportive and passionate, always pushing us to do our best. Our peers are more than stand partners, they're friends. And the atmosphere after performing a practice piece is exhilarating. The orchestral experience is unmatched, and the priceless memories, for the gift of no price, truly makes FYO special. My mom was a very supportive figure of my participation in the program. You know, Mom, she drives you to every class, every game, every concert. And it was a childhood dream of hers to play the violin, and she's been able to see that dream come to a reality through her children. But I asked my mom if she would enroll us if a fee were required, and she said no. So FYO being equal opportunity really made this a possibility. And FYO also set me up for greater success. After graduating from the program, I had the honor of auditioning for and performing in the Georgia Tech Orchestra. I saw my best grades that semester yet, and I made the dean's list. And this upcoming semester, I have the pleasure of returning for my senior year. But it's not the same. It's not as amiable, and those students had to pay for their lessons. FYO taught me everything I know about music. It's safe to say, without this fundamental understanding of the basics, without equal opportunity, I would not have been able to perform for the Georgia Tech Orchestra. I would not have been prepared for the rigor of a college orchestra. I wouldn't have encouraged my sister to join the FYO, and I wouldn't have been able to use that experience for a college entrance essay to get into my dream school. If it weren't for your support, none of this would have been possible either. I can't imagine my life without music. I can't imagine Palm Coast without FYO, and I can't imagine FYO without your support. I wanted to take a moment to thank you for your support of the Flagler Youth Orchestra for so many years and for supporting the music futures of myself, my friends, my sisters, and the countless young musicians of Palm Coast. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Paulo Pereira, Flagler Youth Orchestra.
Good afternoon. Distinguished superintendent and school board members, good evening, all of you. Good evening. I'm Dr. Paulo Torres. I've been a musician for thirty-six years as a professional and another twenty years studying. And I've lived in different countries in the world. I played in more than thirty-seven symphony orchestras. I founded some youth orchestras in Brazil. I worked with El Sistema in Venezuela, one hundred and thirty-five thousand- I worked with El Sistema in Venezuela, one hundred and thirty-five thousand children in a country the size of Georgia. And I was overwhelmed and exhausted, so much work. I was teaching at two universities, a school of fine arts, and I was a conductor of a major state symphony orchestra, and I came to Flagler County, I came to Palm Coast for a sabbatical. And for my great surprise, I found this beautiful orchestra, and immediately I registered my kids in it, because I thought this was the place to stay. And I'm retiring from my jobs in Brazil, and on July 6th, I became an American citizen.
Members, I would like to- We have rules, we're gonna follow them. Sorry, sir.
So, thank you. So I would like to mention a thought. Ellen White, a great writer, North American, once wrote, she said that "Used properly, music may find no parallel in its power to instill in men the beauty of true morality and the highest principles that should govern our lives." FYO is a national reference. They should have our undivided and complete support, for FYO is here to bring not just quality education, but also physical, emotional, and spiritual healing through music. When I presented myself as a volunteer at the hospital in Palm Coast, they immediately, after ten months, they said, "You gotta stay." They created a position that doesn't exist in the whole country, which is music ministering to the patients and to the staff. So this is where I work now, bringing music to patients, and it's been a greater blessing to me, actually. And I'll finish saying and thanking about your support, and I hope it will continue. And with this anonymous thought that says, "Music speaks what cannot be expressed, soothes the mind and gives it rest, heals the heart and makes it whole, flows from heaven to the soul." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Jack Lisenby, Flagler Youth Orchestra.
Hello, board. Before I begin, I just want to say thank you for your seventeen years of support, and I hope that this passes unanimously, unlike last year. Hello, my name is Jack Lisenby, and I'm playing the Flagler Youth Orchestra for ten years. First off, I want to say this program has changed the trajectory of my life. I've participated in over thirty concerts since I started, and I'm a member of the quartet. We play at many different events in Flagler County. I've participated in many events outside of the Flagler Youth Orchestra too, like the Spotlight on Youth Talent Show. Needless to say, I'm extremely grateful that this program helps spark my love of music. I'm just one example that you've seen today of what the youth orchestra can do for students in this county. And with these amazing accomplishments in mind, I want to discuss some of the points that were made at previous school board meetings. The equity of this program compared to other county programs has been brought up numerous times in the past two years. But it's important to remember that the Flagler Youth Orchestra is a special case because it is a special program. Many counties across the country have strings built into their band and orchestra programs, but this is not the case for Flagler County. Because of this, the FYO is the only opportunity for students to get free access to string instrument education in this county. Furthermore, while this program is available to every student in this county, it is particularly beneficial to those who do not attend a Flagler County school. I'm not homeschooled myself, but I am a part of Florida Virtual School, which is a public school through the state. Because of this, and some technicalities, I'm not able to participate in the band and other activities homeschool students are allowed to participate in. So because of this, the FYO is my only access to free instrument education. Taxpayer dollars fund this program, and it's perfectly equitable and fair that instead of a string program taking place during the school day, it takes place after the school day. Additionally, I just want to say that the total amount spent on salaries of three high school band instructors was $254,000 in the 2021-2022 year. The orchestra's given $70,000. Yet with biweekly instruction, each orchestra level is able to prepare for three concerts a year. And I want to also say the total of $95,000 was spent on instruments and attire for both high schools in this county last year. And while band members do pay a fee for their instruments and uniforms, our orchestra members also pay for the attire we're wearing, and we rent our instruments. Transportation was also brought up, and transportation is also a bargain, because buses that go passing Indian Trails Middle School just stop to drop off FYO members. There are no special trips. And if other programs are asking for transportation options, perhaps it's better to allow these programs options rather than retracting them from the FYO. The FYO is the biggest bargain for education in this county, and it has enriched the lives of students, of over six thousand students since 2005, and that is thanks to your continued support. I just want to end with the words of the late Jonathan May, who is the first artistic director of the Flagler Youth Orchestra. "Selling cookies is not what we do. If people wonder why this is a worthy cause, they can come and listen."
Thank you. Next speaker?
Cody Biggs, FYO.
I am Cody Biggs, and I'm going to be reading a letter from, it's a statement from an artistic director of the Flagler Youth Orchestra, Mr. Joseph Corporone, also known as Mr. C. Dear School Board Members, thank you for allowing my statement concerning your Flagler Youth Orchestra to be read at tonight's meeting. I grew up in a small community called Redland, about forty miles south of Miami. Our community was very rural and peaceful. Music had a salvific effect on my life. Though Redland lacked a significant impact for the perspective of the performing arts, I was still able to learn to play the piano and the cello. After completing high school, I received a full scholarship to the University of Miami and majored in cello performance. I received my Bachelor of Music degree in 1986. I was set on a musical path early in life, and feel that musical performance and teaching are my calling in life. What if I had ignored that calling? That blame would have fallen on my own two shoulders. If that had happened, I believe my life would have been frustrated, because I'm not cut out for an agricultural or military lifestyle, the only two real alternatives I had to music in 1982. To be clear, both a noble and important professions, but not ones in which I could have flourished. I can say without a doubt that being a musician has given my life meaning, purpose, and joy. Most of the jobs I've had since college have been in the field of music: music teacher, freelance musician, church musician, and last but not least, first a teacher, and now the artistic director of the Flagler Youth Orchestra. What it forces beyond my control, what it forces beyond my control made decisions that in fact forced me to quit? That brings us directly to the issue before the board today. A child's education should be well-rounded. For seventeen years, the Flagler School Board's vision for stringed instrument education in Flagler County has been the Flagler Youth Orchestra. We, the teachers of the FYO and our program administrator Cheryl Tristum, have faithfully, consistently, and professionally carried out the board's mandate to provide a stringed instrument program for the students of Flagler County. Unlike some absurd claims, your FYO is not an illegal company, nor is your FYO a third-party vendor. We are carrying out the mandate of the school board. You vote annually to provide funds for your FYO program, approve our contracts, and you pay us directly for the educational services that we provide. We are glad that your vision for education includes stringed instruments, and we are proud to be your Flagler Youth Orchestra.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Shari Novak, FYO.
I'm Shari Novak. I'm an FYO mom and volunteer. I've been volunteering for as long as my kids have played with the FYO, so I'm going to read about my experience and my son's experience with the FYO. Zachary, my older son, began, he's with me here in the back, my older son began playing the viola with the Flagler Youth Orchestra six years ago. He was hesitant about joining at first, but I insisted that music would help him. He needed the help. He had always had difficulty with social interactions, and when he was very small, he had speech as well as occupational therapy. Zachary also has epilepsy. Somehow intuitively, I believed that early access to music would be one of the keys to his success, as he made his way through school and later life. So at eight years old, Zachary joined the orchestra, and, as I suspected, he took to music right away. What would become a passion for music, as well as the nurturing of our newly adopted extended family at the FYO, with the program director, Ms. Cheryl, and then music director, Sue Cryan, helped Zachary to overcome his learning challenges in the classroom. He remains to this day an IB honor roll student every year. He currently plays at the highest level of the FYO, the Harmony Chamber Orchestra, with current music director Joe Corperin, whom he adores. To say that music has changed Zachary's life is an understatement. He plays the piano, he writes music, he played the oboe through middle school at Indian Trails in the band with Mr. Morden, and he will be starting high school at Matanzas and plans to play the saxophone in Mr. Schultz's marching band. My other son, Oliver, also began to play the violin at eight years old with the FYO, and played for a few years before COVID hit. He is about to start middle school and also wants to play sax in the band. Oliver has always been a straight A student, and this past year in the sixth grade, he was doing math at a ninth grade level. He also got a perfect score in his FSA in third grade in math. The Flagler Youth Orchestra is a gift to our students here in Flagler County, especially because musical instruction is offered to all of the children at such a young age, a critical time in a child's early learning and educational development. The FYO is a gift to our community when we share in the beautiful classical musical concerts three times a year, and Cheryl Tristum, the FYO's indefatigable and intrepid leader, and Joe Corperin, its talented and funny music director, as well as all the other music instructors and volunteers involved in the program, are a beacon of light to the children and community of Palm Coast. Thank you all for your time and continued support of this invaluable and indispensable institution.
Next speaker?
Linda Hutches, FYO.
Thank you. My daughter was started in 2005, one of the first students. She was actually four when she began, because she didn't turn five until September. She graduated from the FYO, was part of the Harmony Chamber. She graduated with honors and with her AA. She says that it gave her a safe place where she could express herself through music, a sense of belonging to something bigger than me. She liked being able to go out in the community with the quartet and share music with others. It gave her useful skills, like working with others, the same goal that she still uses today. It helped her with time management skills that she uses today, between practicing cross-country, homework, school, band. She had a sense of great accomplishment when they had the end-of-the-year concerts. She says it helped her with her attention span as she struggled with her HD moments. She made good friends she would never have met, some that were homeschooled. It helped her improve her reading skills. She graduated from UCF in 2019 at the age of nineteen with her bachelor's of nursing, right before COVID hit. She worked in the ICU, saving many people's lives. She learned all of this with grateful beginnings from Cheryl and the youth orchestra, and it's very important for other students to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Nikki Musikos, FYO.
Hello. Those are tough acts to follow. Okay. Flagler County has something very special. I live in Volusia County, and I grew up in the Volusia County school system during a time when the arts and music were very present in the school system. I'm thirty-six, and I'm seeing a shift that this county has a lot of these opportunities now, and Volusia doesn't, which is interesting. For sixteen years, this county has had a really unique opportunity for kids. The FYO has taken on a life of its own through the dedication of many people over the years, and it is because of the support from the school board that Flagler County programs can continue to exist. Those impositions of leadership in any school district have a big job. You play an essential part in the broader scope of students' lives by supporting and therefore fostering a diverse culture of student engagement. I've seen firsthand the positive role this program plays into the lives of not just students who participate, but the families involved. I had a mother come up to me after a concert and express her gratitude because the program helped her daughters come out of their shell a bit more. I see students inspired and motivated on a regular basis. There's laughter, learning taking place, and most importantly, a sense of belonging to something. I love coming to work here, obviously because I enjoy teaching, but because I know that the needs of the students and the needs of the teachers are of the highest importance, and this is a main reason why this program runs as efficiently as it does. I can show up and focus on my role as a teacher exclusively because of the excellence in planning. This is probably the easiest, least chaotic teaching job I've ever had, and I've been a music teacher for thirteen years. As members on a school board, you can relate to the role of leadership and what it entails, which is a lot, and you probably don't get enough credit for it. The pandemic affected so many aspects of our lives. The fact that the program kept going and we adapted speaks volumes of our ability to accept and adjust to change. We transitioned into a world online for a while, and now we have back the experience of doing things together again. In closing, what is the benefit of cutting funding from a successful program that contributes to the overall well-being of Flagler County students? If the most important thing is the overall well-being of students and the performance of the school district, cutting a program like the FYO seems like an unnecessary loss. If we lose touch with the bigger picture because of minor details and logistics, then we start to lose touch with the values that create a successful, balanced environment. The way one team of people runs a program out of time, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. In the case of FYO, if it ain't broke, keep making better and grow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Final speaker is Evan Hernandez, FYO.
Hi, my name is Evan Hernandez. I'm a proud alumnus of the Flagler Youth Orchestra, the FPC Band, and the IB Program, and I now study music at Stetson University with full tuition. The FYO is instrumental for me to be able to go to college. The program is extremely well organized, and students of all ages and abilities have opportunities to grow, both as musicians and as people. The FYO gave me many opportunities to experience professional musicianship before taking the plunge to go to university for it, both as a performer and as a musician overall. Just recently, I even had the opportunity to travel across Europe playing violin with the Stetson Chamber Orchestra, which was an extension of the opportunity that was given to me by the FYO. Music is a huge part of my identity, and I think this program is a fantastic example of what to aim for, so please do what you can to continue supporting it. Had it not existed, I wouldn't have had the opportunity to go to a private university, to travel the world, or to meet some of the amazing people I've met through being a student. I know of students who ended up in the band programs because they played with the FYO for the first part of their journey as musicians, students who went to college for music like I did following my- We're all proud and grateful for the existence of a program like this. The arts need more funding, but the opportunity provided by the F Y O must continue to be available to those students who have come to find a home within the F Y O and the alumni who attribute a part of their identity to their education as musicians. With me are letters of support as well from the dean of the School of Music and the violin professor at Stetson, the latter of which I'll read now. Dear members of the Flagler School Board, as a professor at Stetson University for 33 years and a lifelong professional musician, educator, and performer, I am writing this letter of support for F Y O from the Orfeo Music Festival in Italy, where we just finished another year of beautiful music making together with the international world-class faculty and music students from all around the world. I'm also writing this letter of support to the F Y O as a mother of two professionally successful daughters and four grandchildren. As you all will agree, studying a musical instrument has been scientifically proven to develop children's brains extraordinarily and significantly. Music is a part of education for all children in many developed societies. Further, when performing ensembles, the study of music develops social skills, collaboration, discipline, responsibility, and punctuality. Regrettably, when faced with budget restraints, the first activities to cut are music and sports, the activities that help keep our children mentally focused and healthy. Private music lessons are costly. Very few parents would pay $70 or more for an hour of music lessons. As a result, socially, we are punishing the children who need our help the most, children who come from a socio-economic level, whose parents cannot afford these expensive lessons, helping to create a circle of perception that classical music is elitist. Please continue to support F Y O, the institution that has gained a tremendous reputation over the last 17 years. Sincerely, Rudakromovich Gomez, Professor of Violin, Stetson University.
Thank you very much. Is that it for public comments? Great, thank you. We're going to move on to the agenda items.
I'd like to move to approve items 7.01 through 13.02.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on any of these items? Ms. McDonald?
Yes, thank you very much. So I have to thank everybody who came and spoke, everyone who came for their presence because you have proven the point that I was making at the board meeting that I've been misquoted and misunderstood around. I did share emails back with people who wrote to me and tried to clear up the confusion. I heard one of the references was the poem, "A World Without Music." My issue is that our day students don't have access to music, art, and movement on a regular basis. I wanted to have that opportunity, and I see some angry folks. I was not intending to have anything happen to Flagler Youth Orchestra, but there are certain things that happen on the internet that are, I'm a favorite whipping post of a lot of issues, and so I got conflated with the threat of taking a program away. I have consistently supported Flagler Youth Orchestra every year I've been on the board and every year before it. As an educator since 72, a neurodevelopmental therapist since 90s, I work with individuals around the world on every label, age, or stage in their development. There is nothing more that I know that helps people other than music and movement and art. That has been my passion for every day that I've spent with children, with teens, with adults, and that's what I wanted to bring to Flagler. I've been working on that since Jacob was here with Mr. Tager, and Ms. Middlestadt can tell you, we talk about this all the time. How do we get more opportunities into the day for the students? As I heard, there are a lot of people that don't have advantages, and the only way they get it is from Flagler Youth Orchestra. There are a lot of kids in our classrooms that don't get it every day, don't get it consistently, don't have that spark turned on in their lives. That's our role. Our role is to give them an opportunity to vibrate. Every part of your body vibrates at a different frequency, and the scale, if you hum the scale, you can tone yourself. If you play a musical instrument, you can tone yourself. If you dance and move and use color and art, you tone yourself. It does stimulate the brain. It does make everything work better. I want that opportunity for every person who is in Flagler Schools. Flagler Schools is unique. My time on the board has to, has been to enrich everything. I'm sorry that people got upset and took the misinformation that social media is so happy to share because it got away, and for those people who I did send my responses by email, I hope you share what I said because it's nothing different from what I'm saying now, from what I've said ever since I started singing at five. I know what it means to have music in your life. I know what it means to have art in your life. I know what it means to not have art in your life and music in your life, and all of those things that come from it. I love it, and I so appreciate you singing my song, "So Bored." The reason I brought up that comment was to have more opportunities through our, through our day for our students and through any enrichment opportunities that we have in our county. That was the purpose of my comments at our workshop, and I'm sorry if you didn't see the workshop, if you went away with misunderstandings. That was never my intention. It would never be in my intention, and any misinformation or anything you hear online, hear, hear, anything you see online or hear through any media source, please check with me personally. I'm happy to talk to everybody about my passions and about what I think is important for every person on this planet, and thank you all for supporting each other. It's vital, and thank you all for generational investments. And I probably went over my 17 minutes, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, and I'm very thankful for the testimony tonight. It was very pleasant to hear such accolades for our students and for our efforts here in Flagler County Schools. Special kudos to Stanley, my former student, who I stored his instrument in my room many times, and Tanya sitting back there, another student, and Daniel and Angela's sister here speaking that I taught many years ago, and I have experience with what a wonderful program F Y O is. And I too, I'm glad that you came out tonight. I'm sorry that you felt you had to because I don't believe that any school board member ever hinted at defunding the program or ending the program, but I know how talk happens and how the rumor mill goes, and what is exciting though is to, for you to come and share your passion for the program. My comment-
And other programs, other programs too.
Other programs too, yeah. My comment a couple of weeks ago at the meeting was because I get contacted and I get comments about the disparity in how we fund programs and how we fund after-school programs. It was never a question about whether this program would be funded and whether this program would happen. And so as a result, and I too answered emails that I got, and I tried to reassure people that this board member wasn't going to defund and that there would be F Y O this year because it's awful for you to go through feeling concerned about something, and I apologize for anyone that had to go through that because it was completely unnecessary. But it was, my conversations about this is that we are so big as a district now that we have had to go back and look at a lot of different systems, and we need consistency from building to building, from elementary school, all the elementary schools, to middle school, to high school. We're in a kind of a growing pains in the community where we're getting bigger and we need consistency from building to building, and the lack of consistency has been a problem because we have students move from school to school, and they need to be able to move within our community and it be the same experience. So that was only, the only comment that I had was about the disparity in funding, and as a result, this afternoon, I brought it up, and we as a board have decided to workshop the programs that we provide for. It's not that, like I said, that no one wanted, anyone wanted defunding, it's that some students have to pay fees to play or do whatever, the sport or the activity that they do. Some parents have to cook in concession stands and take their turns in concession stands. Some students, this week, I had football players come to my door and I bought for football cards. They're required to put in an effort to help with the funding. That was all the conversations about, you know, as to why one program, there's not effort by the students or no fee paid by the parents or fundraising by the students and where other programs, students have to pay fees, they pay entry into the event, they pay, they have ads in their programs, and they have to fundraise. So it's just about, it wasn't ever about defunding, it was about equality, and we're going to workshop that, and it would be great if we could fund everything fully where no student would have to fundraise or have car washes or do the things that they do in order to be able to participate in their after-school activity. So just being physically responsible as board members with our monies, because that's what you pay us to do and that's what the state statutes tell us to do, but it was never about ending the program. So thank you for coming out, and maybe if we could get you to get on that, get that passion on the half penny sales tack and make some buttons for the half penny sales tack and go out and sell the half penny sales tack, that would be great.
Okay, are there any other questions on any of the consent items?
No, but I would like to make a comment since-
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, students present and past. Obviously, this program has had a wonderful effect on many Flagler students and their families. Thank you, Cheryl Tristan, for everything you do. I have always supported your work, and I know the effect that you have on these kids and their families, and I applaud you and your staff because you've obviously put together a tremendous group of teachers, real teachers that get in and care about their kids. On another note, all I want to say is I hope that we don't have to debate this fact again next year. I would like to make certain that we fund F Y O indefinitely, as long as there's kids that want to play and people that want to teach them, and we can manage to work it into our budget. This has got to stop. I don't want to have to spend time or have all of you, who were great to come out and gracious to speak with us this evening about things that matter to our community, take time. I would rather us just know it's stamped. Move along. We're going to keep doing this because we need to. We need to. That's, there's no other way to say it. So again, thank you. Let's hope we can, don't have to continue this again next year or the years after that, but we should continue to support F Y O.
Ms. Conklin, did you want to say something?
Of course. First of all, thank you for coming out and sharing, and I don't, I'm pretty sure, Cheryl, that was pretty cool. Being the director and giving so much of your time over all of these years, it had to be pretty just darn amazing to just hear some of the outcomes of an opportunity like this and the impact that it has on students. And for you and for your teachers to just know that you're just a part of that, any part of that, is pretty magical. So thank you for coming tonight, and listen, watch the July 5th workshop. Watch the workshop for yourself and make your own decisions. I agree, maybe moving forward, we need to be looking at a multi-year support so we're not having to do this again and again, nor are we having to debate whether somebody is in a use-of-facilities agreement, not in a use-of-facilities agreement, and whether or not there's concerns around any of the programs. Your comments are well-received tonight. We appreciate you coming tonight. I'm glad that you were here tonight. I think it was important, not just for the board, but I think it was really important for the community to hear some of the accolades and the impact that the program has had. And Cheryl, I don't think you have to worry about recruitment this year. I have a feeling that people are going to be well-versed and know and understand, and if I was a parent with children entering school or within the age to join, I would be all over this opportunity and take full advantage of it. So thank you, all of you, for taking the time to come out tonight. Thank you for your support, community members, and showing up. Here's to the next great concert, hopefully.
Okay, board, I do have a question on 13.01, the value adjustment board. We did get confirmation that Ms. Ames was okay with being the community member. I just want to make sure before I vote on that. All right, is there any other questions on any of these items? Seeing none, I have a motion by Ms. Wilbright, second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, board members, next item, 16.01, the mental health application. Mr. Jackson?
Or should we take a two-minute, five-minute break to allow anyone who came for other items?
What, they don't want to say for the good part?
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break in case you came for just the consent items.
We're not offended, you can go.
Okay, board members, next item, 16.01, the mental health application. Or should we take a two-minute, five-minute break to allow anyone who came for other items?
What, they don't want to say for the good part?
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break in case you came for just the consent items.
We're not offended, you can go.
Yeah.
... under shirts and add it as a fifth. And then where it says, "No garments shall contain insignias," comma, add the word graphics or logos. And basically, it's everything inappropriate that we would agree would be inappropriate. Would keep us within the...
So are we eliminating then any statements? Because slogans and statements can...
So we don't say...
I think if you're gonna move the graphics, you need to put slogans and statements in there as well, because that could be related to drugs or alcohol.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So if you want, "No garments shall contain insignias, graphics, slogans, or statements or logos related to..."
Yeah.
Yeah.
My only question is, is that going to be an enforcement issue for staff to have to stop and read everything, or it slips by? That was one of the things that everybody was talking about, the enforcement issue for staff.
I think with most of these things, and Kristi, you can probably speak to this better than anything, but if there is something on a shirt, whether it's a graphic, or a logo, or a slogan, if it is disrupting the educational environment, right, then we would have just cause. Or would we not? I mean, I don't want us to adopt a policy that's gonna put us in slippery slope.
Well, I think the problem with the deans, the deans just don't want it to be so subjective that it can be interpreted different from person to person, where they can, it can be evenly and equally between buildings even, and from staff member to staff member, it held to, you know, adhered to. I think that, when I went in, one meeting the deans had, that was the biggest conversation, that it has to be enforceable, and it can't be something that's so subjective that it can be interpreted differently.
I feel like we have maybe a very, very small population that might push the envelope on this, and I think we have professionals in the building that would be able to draw the line to say what's appropriate, not what's appropriate. But it seems like it would be a heavy hand across K-12 all the way without having some leeway.
Well, and they do have a First Amendment rights, and it, and it's, their clothing is part of, clothing is considered speech if it has words on it, so there's that.
If, if you allow graphics, and when you just said First Amendment rights, it will go down the slippery slope, and there will be the lawsuit that will be filed. By removing it and leaving it where there's no graphic tees, it makes it cleaner, easier, because you've just said unless it's spirit-related, t-shirts and things of that nature, you don't have to worry about it. But there, there have been lawsuits where it's been simple slogans that have been placed in Alachua County, I can think of for one, where the suit was filed, so.
Well, okay. Then just respectfully, I won't be approving, I'll be a no vote on the policy if it's going to be as written. So I understand everybody's point of view, but I think it's heavy-handed and a little overkill, so.
First and seconded, right?
I believe so.
Yes.
Ms. Messer.
Yeah, I understand where Colleen's coming from, and I understand what Kristi just said. I think what I'd like to see is proceed this, at least a year, under this new policy, and if there are any major problems, or if we don't see anything, maybe then we can add graphics later. But I, I think at this particular point, I would probably just keep it the way it is and see how it goes. And if there's a lot of pushback, or whatever, then we can, again, just change that for next year, if we need to. So it's just a thought.
I would, the only thing I would caution, I guess, all of us, is we, we did ask for input. And the input that we did get overwhelmingly, if you look at that spreadsheet, that is the one thing that was again, and again, and again, and again, and again, was about the use, the allowing of graphics. And I think it does become a challenge shopping for young kids. I think if you, if it's inappropriate, if it's offensive, if it's related to drugs, or violence, or weapons, or sex, that, to me, that's, I mean, that's pretty clear as well, even with the federal laws around freedom of expression, so.
Board, there was also, in the Code of Student Conduct, there was a recommendation to add some additional statute language from 1006.07, and that language specifically states clothing and/or accessories that cause a substantial disruption to student learning will be addressed in a manner that is consistent with district school board policies for similar infractions. So if there were students that wore something that did cause a substantial disruption on campus, it would be addressed and dealt with through our student code of conduct.
Right.
One of my concerns is the time of year, and we have an election coming up in November, and the, I understand the little kids wanting to wear their Looney Tune things, and I'm quite fine with that, but to have political shirts, and things are so divided, I don't think they belong, and if we allow graphics, I don't see how we can't allow political shirts.
We're an educational institution, so part of that is having appropriate discussions. So, I mean, I don't think, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's, I think it's pretty heavy-handed, if we, we might as well just stick with collared shirts.
There was some favor in that direction as well.
Yes.
John, do you recall from, since you're the co-later of all things, do you remember what the feeling was for all the people who are going to be enforcing this, the deans and all of those people that deal with that? Was this a, a strong area for them?
So at one point, graphics was added to the upper attire, but slogans and statements were left below, hoping to eliminate anything that, that may become controversial. So at one point, graphics was up there, then graphics got taken out, so it has kinda gone back and forth on that. I will tell you, with the elementary especially, there were 48 families that specifically stated they just wanted their kids to be able to wear superhero shirts and dinosaurs and that kinda thing. But, but again, I also do recognize that then that could lead to things. So at one point, graphics was in upper attire, and statements and slogans was not going to be allowed, and that was kind of the split that the dress code committee came up with, is we're not allowing slogans and statements, but if they have some pictures on their shirts, that wouldn't be an issue. Could there be a picture that could create some controversy? Yes. That's why we're hoping that adding the Florida State statute language of 1006.07, we would be able to then address those on an individual basis.
So maybe the compromise would be to get rid, and this is an issue, do we have to advertise this again if we, if we modify it? Okay. So maybe the suggestion, along with what Colleen was saying, is to eliminate slogans and statements and put graphics down in the insignias or logo, insignias, graphics, or logos related to drugs, alcohol, and violence? So you could have graphics, but it can't have any subtleties or any alliances with any of the things that we don't want advertised. And then we get rid of the languaging, the issues, the statements with slogans and statements.
And I think that was, so that was the first thing that we were talking about?
Yeah. You were, 'cause you were, I think you were gonna, what I heard was that you were gonna leave slogans and statements and just drop graphics down, but if you just eliminate that from what John just said, which makes a lot of sense, and eliminates the other issue, and just puts graphics down with the other things that we don't want it related to, so it allows Looney Tunes and not, right, drag queens or some, I didn't, wrong, wrong phrase, sorry. I meant, I'm, sorry. I don't know, a drag on a cigarette or something, you know? Oh, well, it fits in there anyway. Yeah, it does. Yeah.
Yes, Board, whoever had made the motion, please clarify this. If you would like to change your motion.
Who started it?
It was you, Ms. Messer.
Comma.
Comma.
Graphics.
Or logos.
Or four.
But we have to eliminate the whole thing.
Eliminate graphics.
You're gonna delete?
Yeah.
Aren't we eliminating...
I thought we were deleting number three.
Are we leaving number three? No garments shall have slogans or statements?
Right.
But that just a limit, that just keeps it into the drug, alcohol, violence gangs. I think what Colleen was just saying was right. No garments shall have slogans or statements, and number four, keep number three that way without graphics, and then number four, no garments, garments shall contain insignias or graphics.
Okay, so I see what you're saying. You're saying the compromise is you wanna keep number three, you wanna keep slogan and statements separate.
Right.
Just move the word graphics down to number four.
Put graphics in number four with the comma after.
Yes.
And that'll eliminate this surveillance for deans and all.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not crazy about this, but yes, yes.
Okay.
So we would add that as number five, John?
Mm-hmm.
No.
We just move graphics from three and put it in four, and the numbers stay the same.
No, I'm talking about on this page. We would copy it, and it would be number five.
Oh, okay, I don't have that page.
We were on the wrong page.
We're on a different page.
No, we're talking about, we're all talking about the same thing, I'm just saying.
At a different spot, yeah. Okay.
Okay, Ms. Messer, will you?
I agree.
Will you?
Restate what we're approving.
Well, okay.
Or resend it, and we'll just do it over again.
No, no, it, well, first of all...
We move the word graphics from number three.
Number three. No garments shall have slogans or statements.
Copy that.
Copy number four, and it's going to be comma, number five.
Upper tire.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Board chair, sorry to interrupt. Just for clarity, I put my administrative hat back on, and I'm in the building. What specifically is meant by "no garments shall have slogans or statements"?
Shirts, dresses, shorts.
Shirts, dresses.
Statements pertaining...
The what?
I'm, I'm thinking of some of our young folks are overcoming crisis in their lives, and they have a support group, and they've created statements that say, Sally Strong, support me in my overcoming a significant life-changing event. Perhaps it was related to an illness or something, so I, I'm just looking for, I didn't wanna use a specific example, 'cause there have been multiple ones this school year, but when we're saying no garments will contain a slogan or statement, how are you defining a slogan or a statement that's not appropriate to be on a dress code item? Just a question, sorry to change your thought process.
Been there forever, though.
No, that's a good point. I didn't think about all of the cancer awareness and, and that, I mean, I had proposed just deleting number three, but...
Well, you can, and then you can put...
That's what I was, yeah.
Go back to that.
Board, you're gonna need to define offensive. You'll need to define offensive, because what is offensive to me may not be offensive to you.
Right, that's what I said, it can't be so subjective that it's not equally...
And so without defining what you are setting forth as being offensive, you are creating an issue for your deans at your schools.
Just get rid of the word offensive topics.
Yeah.
Just deemed inappropriate by administration.
Yeah. Sexually suggestive, violence, gangs, weapons, alcohol, drugs.
Same question for what's inappropriate.
Well, it's in here now.
I understand, but right now, it's, it's because it's no garments, you had graphic slogans and statements were prohibited, period. Now you're allowing graphic slogans and statements to be in there, and now you have subjective as well, because you have said, as long as they're not inappropriate, as long as they're not offensive.
But you had insignias and logos, Kristi.
Insignias and logos were...
Related to drug, alcohol, violence, gangs, weapons, sexually explicit, or suggestive.
Well, and I think Kristi should write about the offensive.
I understand, but insignias and logos are manufacturers usually.
So Kristi, from your lens, do you read without offensive?
Without offensive, without inappropriate, bottom line, anything goes. They would be permitted to wear whatever they wanted, and if somebody found it offensive, now you're making it up to your deans and administrators to determine whether or not it's inappropriate or not, and if you're waiting for there to be a major disruption?
So I agree with what you were saying. I was just wondering if we just take out the word of, or, or the two words, or offensive, and put, or sexually, put the or before sexually suggestive, so it's the chain that you have before, so it reads, "No garments shall contain insignias or logos related to drugs, alcohol, violence, gangs, weapons, or sexually suggestive topics deemed inappropriate by admin," well, deemed inappropriate by administration, just get out deemed inappropriate, too.
I'm gonna say that a year ago, when we started this process, I said I didn't care what the dress code came out to be, as long as it was enforceable.
Right.
And I know that the deans had, are the ones that have to enforce the dress code, and that they were very passionate about their opinions, because they're in the trenches every day about what they can and can't enforce because of subjectivity. So for that reason, I want it to stay the way it is, that it was vetted by the deans.
Yeah, but the way it is, is making them subjective. Number four, the way it is right now, is putting administrative, it's, read it, it's...
Well, it's saying there's no, but...
No, it says sexually suggestive or offensive topics.
No garments shall have graphic slogans or statements.
No, you read number four. It's, it's still whether or not offensive topics deemed inappropriate by administration allowed.
But there won't be any topics if there's no graphic slogans or statements allowed. The point is, is Kristi, Ms. Gavin's saying that if you put graphics in, then you've opened the can of worms. If there's no graphic slogans or statements, then they're just wearing solid shirts, or plaids, or flowered, or whatever, then it's not an issue at all, and there's no subjectivity. Once you start putting something that could contain any of that subjectivity, then you've opened a can of worms and put the deans in a position where they can't enforce it.
Yeah.
So I, I'm, I believe, in my heart of hearts, that if the deans were here, they would want it just as it's written still, because of that very reason.
I have to agree. And, and I think the suggestion was see it play out for a year and see what the feedback is.
You can, you can always loosen up later, you can't toughen, I mean, we're, you can't toughen up more, it's hard to pull things back. It's easier to loosen up than it is to bring it back. I, I understand, unless we make it different for elementary school.
Well, that's the other part, yeah.
I have no problem with making it where the elementary school kids can wear graphics and middle school and high can't.
You thought you were done?
We do have two separate codes, and we can make it different for elementary and secondary.
And the majority of those comments that were about graphics were from elementary parents, weren't they?
Yes.
And there were some adult, there were some parents on the older end that were against graphics, if I recall.
There were parents on the older end that, that, and it was split. Some of them liked the current dress code, some of them liked the new dress code. Forty-eight specifically wanted graphic tees at elementary, thirty had addressed graphic tees in secondary.
Addressed as wanting them or both sides? Oh, really, wanting them, thirty?
Yeah, thirty in secondary, forty-eight in elementary.
Kristi, let me ask a question. If a student, regardless of the grade level, if a student comes in and was wearing a t-shirt that had a slogan on it, that wasn't gang-related, sexually explicit, drugs, violence, you know, whatever, what, what happens? I mean, if it were to go to court, and a student said, "This is an expression, a freedom of speech situation," what, what does that look like?
Depends on whether they sue in state court or federal court, and if it's federal court, and if they are seeking monetary damages, there is no cap.
Okay, but that still doesn't tell me, do they have the right to wear that in a federal court?
Do they have the right?
To wear a slogan?
If, if our policy is that they can wear slogans and statements, and then we tell them if they can't...
No, I'm saying if it doesn't, if our policy, if we adopt it the way it is presented.
They would not be able to sue, but primary reason of why is because we have also attached it to a safety and security issue, and that was the whole reason when we initially created uniforms, it was for safety and security, for our students to ensure that they had a safe learning environment to go to without having to worry about bullies, about peer pressure, about significant things. That was part of the preamble to the dress code policy, is the statement with respect to safety and security. And so that is why it withstands the, a challenge, and it would, you know, as it stands right now, that's why our policy stands, and we would win in court. If you permit there to be slogans and statements, and I'm gonna use an example of if you had somebody who wanted to wear a Blue Lives Matter shirt, hypothetically, that's their slogan, "Blue Lives Matter." If a student said, "I'm offended by that, and this is triggering me, blah, 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 blah," and the students said, "I have every right to wear it," now, and we say, "No, you," and we discipline them, and they're gonna file a suit. That has been the tradition that you have seen in Alachua County.
So which would you prefer to, as our legal counsel to defend? This one that's in writing now, or one that allows graphics?
This is easier to defend from a, from a safety and security standpoint.
Sorry. Kristi, do we have to take out the or offensive topics? Because that is subjective? Or just the word, the two words, or offensive?
Well, so sexually suggestive is one area, offensive topics, that could be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with the easy one, somebody wearing a Confederate flag, or...
No, I understand that.
Or somebody setting forth, you know...
Do we have to identify it? Because otherwise, as it's been mentioned, that's subjective, if it's offensive, it's selectively offensive.
But if we leave no graphics, they can't wear the Confederate flag.
Right, right. So I...
I'm just giving you examples of cases that have gone before.
Right.
All right, someone make a motion, someone second it, and then we can vote these things up or down until we get to a decision.
Do you have the other one rescinded to start over?
I'm still waiting on a second of the one that included the graphics and the change that Ms. Messer did, unless she wants to rescind that one again. Okay. All right. Now we can start all over. Now I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, I, I'd like to move approval of the uniform policy for K-5 to delete item three.
Could you read that into the record, please?
So I would like to make the, I'd like to split this secondary and primary. So I'd like to make the motion for primary, that we delete on page two, item three.
Could you read that, please?
Sure. That item three states, "No garments shall have graphics, slogans, or statements," and that would be for the elementary level.
I'll second.
Board members, are there any other discussions on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor of K-5 with number three, and the general rules apply to dress code being deleted, which states no garments shall have graphic slogans or just statements, please signify with aye.
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 Those opposed? Nay. Chair votes nay. So we have K through five done. High school.
I move that we adopt the dress code as written.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I'm wondering if offensive topics is gonna be a problem for our enforcement.
It's subjective.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, we're right back in that same boat.
Right, so I would suggest that we eliminate...
So because you have kept in...
Let's vote this one up or down, and then, let's vote this one up or down, and then if you have a different suggestion...
Kept it in the K to five, so...
I'm just saying that we can vote this one up or down, and then you can make another motion if you don't like this in the secondary, whoever that is. So we have a motion by Ms. Messer, a second by Ms. Wilbright. All those in favor signify with aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails three to two. Okay. That was for high school. Do we have a, another motion for high school?
I would like to, I guess, well, I mean, I know how this is gonna go, but move approval of the secondary dress code, eliminating from number three the term graphics, and add the language, add graphics to number four after insignias, and copy number four and add it as a five on page one. That makes sense.
Do, do I have a second? Not seeing a second, motion fails.
Yep.
So we have failed the change that was originally suggested, we have failed as it's written, so someone needs to change what's written.
I move that we hold this suggestion that was agreed to, and give it a year of operations to see how the deans deal with these questionable phrases in the scene, like the offensive topics. It seems, I don't know if we...
So that, that one lost, the original lost.
There, I'm only, I'm only seeing one thing here, what do we?
But now she can bring it up, 'cause she voted against it.
I'm sorry, say it again.
So the original motion lost, but you're allowed to bring it up because you voted against it, if you would like to go back on this.
So I can change, I can't bring it up, then?
You can bring it up, because you voted against it. Those two cannot bring it up.
Well, because of the conversations we've had, and we're gonna go around in a circle, if we don't put this in the field, people won't know what to put on in the morning, and that's worse than, you know...
Oh, well, we're not leaving this topic till we have approved something.
No naked kids in school.
So, can I get a motion?
Well, let's try it. Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. McDonald, a second by Ms. Wilbright. All those in favors of the secondary code, dress code as presented, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries three to two. I'll just tell you, I was happy with the old dress code, so, but I didn't think that was gonna ever pass. So we, now we have those, so we will move on to the student code of conduct. Was that somewhat clear, Mr. Finelli?
Yes, I, I took some notes, I will go back and watch this again as well, to make sure that I get it all right.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I'm not sure, we know what...
We know what we voted on.
Board, just so you know, with what took place tonight, we will need to be changing our, um, board policy on dress code.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Okay, board members, um, the next item is sixteen point zero four, the approval of the student code of conduct presented by Mr. Finelli.
Hello again. Um, so we have our two student codes of conduct. Um, we had two copies in there. I will make the adjustments to the dress codes because neither of them are going to fit what they need to fit with the changes. Well, actually, the secondary one will because it was approved as is. So the secondary one with the new dress code will be correct. I will make the modifications to the elementary one to update it with the dress code that was approved. With our codes of conduct, they are reviewed annually. Uh, we request feedback from faculty, staff, students, parents, teachers in regards to updates and changes to our code. We then, uh, go through and make revisions and updates and vet our code, um, to stay, um, in compliance with state law and make additional changes that are guided by our deans and a lot of times admin, faculty, and staff on campus to, uh, better meet the needs of the school regarding, um, rules and enforcement. So we did workshop and go through, um, all of the changes. Um, some of the, some of the changes that were significant were, um, we wanted to move, uh, leaving school without permission from a level-two offense to a level-three offense because, um, whenever a student leaves school without permission, it is a very serious offense. So we wanted to make sure that, um, we raised it to the level of where it needed to be. Um, we also added a code for, um, planned fighting because we know now, um, with the advances of technology and some of the other, uh, advances that we have, um, that sometimes students plan fights and, and wait till they see each other on campus. Um, and if there is a planned fight, that is a much more serious fight than something that happens serendipitously, and we want to be able to, um, to discipline accordingly for that as well because it is different than somebody stepping on somebody's shoe and just serendipitously a fight breaking out. So if you planned it outside of school, you bring it on campus, it's going to raise to a higher level than, um, than it would be if it just happened. We also, to our social media platform, um, wanted to add cyberbullying to make sure that we are addressing cyberbullying as well. Uh, we added the language "see something, say something," which is our specific reporting app for students who wanna report something that's occurring on campus. We wanted to make sure that that language was added as well. Um, and then we also updated our attendance language. We have, um, some new attendance procedures and protocols this year. We wanted to make sure that we were capturing all of the state statute language in our student code, um, and making sure that we're getting our students to school every day on time in their seats, ready to learn. Um, and then also the additional language of one zero zero six point oh six, or point oh seven regarding, um, the dress code enforcement of, uh, substantial disruptions.
John, could we, um, I know you have it in here, uh, like, for example, EE, the social media, major use of social media on campus, on school transportation, or school-sponsored events with malicious intent. Would that cover, like, these planned fights, the people who are videotaping and sharing them?
Yes, so unauthorized videotaping is a code that's in there. It's a, it's an automatic one-day-out-of-school suspension, and our deans, um, are aware of that and utilize that. They're trained when they come up on a fight, um, that any student with a camera out that is video-recording that fight gets an automatic one-day-out-of-school suspension for unauthorized videotaping.
Would it be, would it be helpful to repeat that after that code about the, the planned fight? Or is that just a separate code and you can't commingle them? So in other words, on page twenty-three, where you have the new item under W, right, the planned fight, um, a premeditated fight or physical attack where there is no serious injury and the engaged party stops on verbal command or however, would it be appropriate to repeat that an additional infraction can be, you know, basically had if the, the fight is being recorded and shared on social media with malicious intent?
So, um, we try and, we use our codes, uh, to, to capture what's occurring on our campuses. So a lot of times, a student that would be engaged in that planned fight would not be the same student that's recording it. So the student that was actually fighting would get the planned fight code, the kid that was recording it would get the code for unauthorized videotaping. Um, and that kinda helps keep our data clean so that we can track, um, what's, you know, what we're seeing on campus.
Board members, can I get a motion?
Yeah.
All right, can I get one board member to make a motion?
I still had questions, but I'll ask Wade.
He just wants to get it on the table.
So you can talk.
Second.
Okay. And those motions are with the updated dress code, correct? Okay, great. Questions? Ms. Wilbright?
Yes, thank you. My question is the cellphone use. It says that they can use it with permission, correct? I, I think the elementary reads a little bit different than the high school, but I was specifically looking at the high school, that they have to have teacher permission. So what is the intent with teacher permission?
So in the secondary code, there are times on campus when teachers utilize, um, cellphones in lessons. Uh, also, um, administration on campus, um, have allowed, uh, students to use, uh, cellphones on campus in their downtime, so transitioning in the hallway or at lunch or, or any free time that they may have, as long as they're using it appropriately and, and not in any negative way.
So that's my question. With teacher permission, it re, to, to me, it means that they have had to ask permission and the teacher given permission. But if you're saying it's in transition, then that's a blanket permission, and that's different than with permission.
You're saying it's both, right?
So it, it kinda is both. So if it's in the classroom during instructional time, they would need teacher permission to utilize it. If it's transitioning on campus or in the cafeteria, um, in the school, uh, in our high schools, they have a, a handbook, and in that handbook, it states that when students are transitioning on campus or in the cafeteria during downtime that they are...
The handbook would have to go with what the code of conduct says.
Yes, and that's why the code of conduct states...
I'm not going on what past practice was because when I was at the high school, kids had them everywhere. They were, their, their phones were out like they were on the street. So we're trying to control that more, right? So with, so the way this is written, "with permission," to me means they had to have just gotten permission, not a blanket permission. So if, if that's a blanket permission, then I don't know why they need permission because there's no way I could tell if someone had permission or not if they're not under my supervision.
I, I hear what you're saying. I don't...
Then it just becomes blanket.
School admin have given them permission to use their cellphones outside of the classroom as long as they're being used appropriately, but in the instructional setting in the classroom, it's at the teacher's request only.
But that's how, how this reads, or are we...
Jill, what page are you on and where?
I'm looking at, um, it was, it's thirty-nine. Cellphones, wireless communication devices.
Page thirty-nine?
Yeah. Says the device shall not be used during the school day without staff approval. That's not a blanket permission. So we're trying to tighten up, right? So, um, and I, we didn't, things weren't tight. So what they did in the past is, but it doesn't matter, what matters is what this means.
But Jill, doesn't the first sentence cover the students using the communication devices?
Students may possess cellphone, cellular telephones, iPods, tablets, and other wireless communication devices...
They can possess them.
At school, on buses, and at school functions.
Means they can possess them. They can have them.
The device shall not be used during the day without staff approval.
Right.
Teachers use them during, for learning purposes. Um, devices may be used on the school bus, provided they're quiet, um, or students use...
But at school, it's saying that they have to have permission. I, I'm just wanting clarity because, again, if it's not clear, it's not gonna be upheld. It's not gonna be, um, you know, enforceable.
So we could add to that language, "The device shall not be used during instructional time without staff approval."
Yeah. That works. That works. But the way it's, because if you don't specify that, the way it reads right now, the way I was interpreting it, it wouldn't be anytime unless someone said, "You may use your phone." For instance, in the elementary school, I would let students call home, but they had to have permission from me to call home. They couldn't just randomly do it. So, yeah, I would put instructional time.
Do we need to add a sentence in there about students being able to utilize it during transition times? Is that what you're saying you want clarity on?
Well, instructional time, transition time, two different things.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
But the change that Jill's talking about will, will...
Help in the classroom.
Impact the instructional time period, but it doesn't do anything with what John is saying that the schools allow in the transitional time.
They, they can use it during instructio, uh, they can't use it during instructional time, I guess, without permission.
Right.
Which would leave the others, they didn't have to have permission.
Okay.
So I think from what I've seen, though, there's so little time that kids are really socializing and interacting, and it gets a little dangerous, especially at transition time. Is there any reason why their devices can be just put away during that time? You know, so they can socialize?
Cause then they text, and then they take pictures, and then they take videos, and this says that they can't video or text.
Right.
Or, I mean, video or, it says text too, doesn't it?
I just think you're, now you're getting into a situation where your deans, you will drive them absolutely crazy if they're...
Absolutely.
I, I think it would become an enforcement issue.
Okay.
Well, I guess the, the issue is in the elementary and the middle schools. Aren't they in their backpacks until the teachers say, "Please take them out to use them"? They use them in the hallways in the middle schools as well? I think it's a danger, and it's contrary to what we need to do in schools. As Colleen said before, we're an educational institution, we should be.
So can I...
The more screen time we have, the worse it is. Yes, you may, Mr. Tucker, sorry.
Can I either get a revision to the motion if we're going to change that? Or can we leave it the way it is?
The device, uh, I move that we change the line, "The device shall not be used during the school day without staff approval," to be, "The device shall not be used in the instructional classroom without staff approval."
I think going to revise that? You're okay with a revision?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on the code of conduct? Either one of these? All right, all those in favor, please signify with aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Uh, motion carries four to one with Ms. McDonald dissenting. All right. Thank you, Mr. Finelli.
Thank you, guys.
The next this evening is the school resource deputy contract, Mr. Willahead.
Good evening, Chair, Chairman Tucker, school board member, Superintendent Middlestat. I'm here tonight to recommend approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three interlocal agreement with the Flyer County Sheriff's Office to provide school resource deputies in each of our public schools that we are responsible for.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion or questions on this item? Ms. Conklin?
I guess the, the question that I have, and I, I believe you, you've kind of identified it, um, Tommy, on page eight. So my understanding is this contract is always July one to June thirtieth, right? So when the, the questions came up around summer school, I was really kinda taken off guard because I, our contract is July one to June thirty-first, right? It's the entire year. So are we only, even though the con, and I see the contract dates in here now reflect July one to June thirty-first, but I also see additional charges on top of that...
Right.
For summer hours.
Yeah, that's...
So is the contract, does it, i, i, if it's really July one to June thirty-first, then I would assume we're paying for that year-long service?
So when Ms. Gavin and myself and, and the chief with the sheriff's department, uh, along with, with their general counsel, um, discussed that, we, we did look at setting aside a certain number of school days and determined that in the contract. However, it, um, we, we agreed that this was, was the best for, uh, summer schools, and that's, um, we looked at it. They provide the schedule for us, um, but they, we did not come to an agreement on that aspect. We are responsible for fifty percent of the share, and the, and the number that you do see is the fifty percent of what it, what it costs to up, up, you know, upstanding or uphold a deputy at our, at our schools. So the, I will say, in the, um, for summer schools, the hourly rate is, is a reduced hourly rate, and we were able to negotiate that down. It is a forty-two dollar an hour rate, um, so I will be working with Ms. Moore, Mr. Reeves, and Ms. Bossardet on our summer school locations and hopefully consolidating that. That way, we can possibly consolidate our locations where we're not having multiple deputies work our summer schools, um, for our cost savings this summer.
And what was the cost of last year's contract?
I do not have that number in front of me. I will say it is about an eight percent increase this year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it looks like it's fairly significant. So that's what I'm confused about. So the cost is, there seems to be a significant increase in the cost, and we're not, the contract actually is not running from July one to June thirtieth, if I'm understanding correctly, because then we are paying additional for services provided during the summertime. Am I understanding that right?
Yeah.
So the, so the just shy of a million dollars for this contract does not include overtime, and it doesn't include summer, and it's about an eight percent plus increase.
Yes, the, the eight percent, um, according to the sheriff's department, was, uh, due to the inflation rate that they have seen.
Dr. Conklin, if I can clarify, so, um, Chief Strobridge indicated to us that when he was calculating the, um, salaries, uh, for the commander, sergeant, and the ten deputies, uh, it was based on, um, utilizing a, uh, the number of days within our school year for students being on campus, and only those plus a couple of days on the front end for purposes of expectations for those SRDs, um, when they report each year. So this calculation of the costs for those sheriff's deputies is for those, um, days when students are on campus. And the one thing that I will say, although we had always in years past, um, our SRD contracts set forth that it's from July one to June thirtieth, uh, it was always with the understanding, and I'm gonna use the City of Palm Coast, who graciously allows us and affords to us out of their salary, uh, or out of their budget, they pay for one of our SRDs, um, and we have that SRD on loan to us during our school year for our students being on campus, but then they do go into the City of Palm Coast as, um, road patrol during the summer.
During summertime.
Okay, are there any other questions on this contract?
I guess I just wonder, um, what are the, um, I, to Dr. Conklin's comments about the summer, um, is that the time when the SRDs are training and we're paying for their, part of their time while they're in training?
No. So what, well, when we're talking about summer school, that is when we're bringing...
I'm sorry. It's not summer school. It's the period from July one or from the end of, for, through June, right? Through June, and then whatever extra. I don't think we have any programming going on in July, do we? on in July, do we? Do we have some summer school going on then?
Right now, yes.
Do have some.
We do.
So is it that they're involved in supervising summer school, or are they involved in the training?
No, they're involved in providing safety and supervision on our campuses during summer school instructional time. When we bring students onto our campus for instructional purposes, we're going to make sure that we have a school resource deputy on our campus.
No, I understand that, but all of our campuses aren't involved in a summer school experience.
Correct.
Right? So I also wonder, what are those other deputies doing, other than the few that are at the sites where we're having summer school?
They have other duties. They're working the road, they're doing trainings.
Okay, but I think to Colleen's point, they're not servicing our students--
That's correct.
And they're not servicing our buildings, and I think that was what the point was, is that we're paying for that time, and if it's, if it's training for upgrading whatever they do for our schools, or any other, I guess, environmental, climate topics that they can get better at dealing with kids, or any of those trainings, I think that's what--
Most of our deputies are, most of our deputies are right now, our school resource deputies are at the FASRA conference in Orlando, so we do have some SRDs that are working, one's at Matanzas, and we had, we also brought in a road deputy working FPC this weekend.
And I guess there would just be more comfort if we knew that those activities, while they're not actually on our sites, in with our students, that whatever they're doing is going to feed back into the programming that we have.
Yeah, I have open communication with the sergeant and the commander all times.
Was that your concern, Colleen?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of it. It just, it struck me as odd that we had a contract that's a year-long contract, and then we were reading about concerns about not having deputies. I just assumed we would have them because it's part of a year-long contract. And it, yep, leave it at that.
Okay, are there any other questions? Messero, you made this motion. Ms. McDonald, you made the second. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, we have three proportionate share mitigation agreements. 17.02 is Porchlight, 17.03 is Whistlestop Farms, and 1704 is Colbert Landing. Ms. Bott.
Good evening, Chairman Tucker, Board Members, Superintendent Middlestat. The first proportionate share mitigation agreement is for Porchlight Apartments. This is a 240-unit apartment complex on US 1, west of Palm Coast Parkway in Bonnell. They are mitigating seven student stations in the amount of $215,226, which will, they will pay at the time of final site plan approval, and they do have a representative here, if you would have any questions for them.
Move approval.
Are there any questions on this?
Thanks for hanging into the end of the board meeting. Thank you, sorry.
With that, I have a motion by Ms. McDonald, a second by Ms. Messero. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
The next is Whistlestop Farms, Ms. Bott.
Whistlestop Farms is a six, a plot of six single-family residences located on County Road 13 in Bonnell. They will be mitigating two student stations in the amount of $32,700. The agreement is to pay $16,350 within 60 days of final plat approval, and the remaining $16,350 honor before one year later.
Move approval.
Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, I have a motion by Ms. McDonald, a second by Ms. Messero. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. And the last, Colbert Landings.
The final one tonight is Colbert Landing. It was originally presented at your information board, or in the agenda, back in March of 2022. It's 482 single-family units located the west side of Colbert Lane, north of US 100. Total of 104 student stations, 25 middle school and 39 high school need to be mitigated. Total mitigation amount, $1,735,200. We have a six payment schedule on this one. First payment of $289,200 due within 60 days of final plat of Phase 1. The second payment of the same amount, honor before six months after that, and the third payment would be honor before another six months after that. Then we go to the second plat, and the next payment's due within 60 days of the Phase 2 final plat, and then the same pay schedule, six months later, honor before, and then 12 months later, honor before.
Move approval.
Any questions, concerns?
Just, just comments. Your paperwork and your process is very informative for us, and I appreciate all the time that you spend with each one of these people and how you explain the situation to us.
Really appreciate it.
There are several more coming.
I know. Thank you, and it's very clear for the public to look at.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. McDonald, a second by Ms. Messero for Colbert Landings. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Bott.
Thank you, Board.
And next is Human Resources, 1801. We have some job description updates. Ms. Johnson, Mr. Freeman.
Yes, sir, Chairman Tucker, oh, he's coming up here.
Okay.
These are job descriptions that were worked shop, that you all worked shopped, out of our operational side of the house, and so they are here for your approval. I believe it was explained which ones were currently funded, and those that just were job descriptions that they were seeking some revisions for the transportation area, and that was something that you all clarified during your workshop time. So tonight, we wanted you to provide us with the approval for these.
Motion to approve. Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
All well explained.
Seeing none, I have a motion by Ms. Messero, a second by Ms. McDonald. All in favor of the change to the job descriptions for operational services, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. The next is a job description change for FTC, Ms. Johnson.
Yes, sir, and you'll see that there's quite a list here, it's extensive. This too was worked shopped, and what we found from FTC, there were a lot of corrections and changes, since the name change, a lot of them were minor things, but all are represented here in the red line that you always expect us to have. So these are here for your approval as well.
Motion to approve. Second.
Are there questions, concerns, or anything on these job descriptions that we didn't hash out at the workshop? Seeing none, I have a motion by Ms. Messero, a second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. And next is 20.01, contracting services for our negotiations with FCEA, our bargaining units, and FESPA. Gavin?
Chair Tucker, Board, you have before you a contract, or an agreement with the Sniffin and Spelman Law Firm to be our chief negotiators for both our FESPA and FCEA union negotiations. They will begin with us immediately upon your approval to assist us as we are in full book this year.
Move approval.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I second.
Thank you, Board Members. Are there any questions or concerns over this? Actually, I feel like this is a pretty good deal.
Mm-hmm.
With that, I have a motion by Ms. Conklin, a second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor of this contract, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We are now going to be with Sniffin and Spelman. Motion carries unanimously. The next is our legislative update, with all these policies that are driven by legislative change, do we have to do these individually?
This is just for advertising, anyway. Can we not just do a blanket?
Yeah, this is--
This is--
Yeah, to advertise all of the policy changes. Board, the only one I want to draw to your attention, so School Board Policy 306 has very minimal changes with respect to our threat assessment teams and their requirements, as well as with respect to our mental health, and the fact that our mental health coordinator will be working with our safety specialist. Instructional materials, what I want to draw your attention to is more so with the fact that instructional material selection and educational media material selection, both of those have now had the specific challenges related to those two, are now placed within those policy sections. Your education media material selection, please note that on D, you all will need to be making a decision on whether or not you want those challenge materials to remain available in circulation, or if you want it to be the way that we have been utilizing our educational material selection challenge, where it was removed from the shelf while the review was going on. When I say removed, it was removed from circulation, it remained on the shelf, but could not be checked out while the review process was taking place. So that is something that you will need to determine whether you want it to be available during the review, or it will be on the shelf, not available for circulation until the review is completed. Either one is fine.
Have there been any additional direction or clarification provided by DOE in relation to any of these policies?
Not at this point.
And can I get a motion?
Move approval with the, well, just move approval, and then we'll talk about it. Second.
Thank you.
So I agree with Kristi that it's important, I think the process was very comforting for, that we used was very comforting for the community, in that it regarded both sides for the position they had while the review was going on, so shelving it, or keeping it in the collection, but just not having it in circulation, I think let, give everybody a chance to take a breath and just trust the process as the review went on, according to the guidelines. And then whatever, what the decision was, I don't remember that it was ever publicly stated, I would hope that we would have a report back on the status of any, any topics or materials that came up for questions, so that there would be awareness in the general public, and maybe it's just a posting by the media center specialists, or our curriculum department when that happens, but, so, how do you put all that in a phrase, Kristi? So just to keep it on the shelf, where would that fit in? Or keep it in the, in the collection, but not available for distributor--
That's the second half. The second half, under D, is the challenged materials shall not be removed immediately, however, such materials shall not be available for student use pending a final decision.
Right.
So just for clarification, right, Kristi, this is just for advertising?
This is just for advertisement, and so when you are finalizing the policy, I need you to let me know which way you want to go.
Right, okay, got it.
Any other questions on these policies? I have a motion by Ms. Messero, a second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously for advertisement. Thank you. Next, 20.03, the School Board Attorney Contract. Get a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, are there discussions or questions on any of this contract?
I think the adjustments are sensible. Right.
All right, if there's no other question or discussion, I have a motion by Ms. Conklin, a second by Ms. Messero. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. The Sarah Consulting Agreement, it didn't change from last year, this is our lobbying firm.
Move approval.
Second.
Do we have any questions on this contract? We did workshop it a little this afternoon. Seeing none, I have a motion by Ms. Conklin, a second by Ms. Messero. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. And the last is, who is the alternate FSBA advocacy committee member?
Janet, I think that's currently you, right?
I was legislative, is that, then, is this a new title for legislative?
So, no, this is not.
I don't think so.
I think it's a new committee, isn't it?
I'm the representative, we just need an alternate. Yeah, I mean, I'm chairing the thing, so--
Then make a motion for her.
Did she make a motion for herself?
I move that Cheryl Messero will be the alternate for the advocacy committee.
Second.
Perfect. Any questions, any comments? Thank you, Ms. Messero. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Messero. All right, we have made it through a small agenda this evening. Now, is there any old business, Board Members, that we didn't work out this afternoon? Is there any new business?
There is, I think we're all listed.
Is there, okay, thank you very much, and now we're on to public comments. You have three minutes, are there any public comments? All right, then we're gonna move right along.
We did not have anybody signed up, however, somebody has their hand raised.
Well, we have someone for public comments, so you have three minutes. Please do not use any board members in that name, address the chair, there will be no clapping, or applauding, or booing for any speakers, no placards, just be respectful and polite. Thank you.
Mother Elizabeth Carol Baca, I'm a resident of Palm Coast, I'm not here for anything political, I'm here about music, and since that was your roomful of people here earlier, my follow-up is our private school of Christmas monastery, which addresses student learning individually through music. And at this point in time, a member of the school board, who I won't say her name, or their name, said if I had trouble with access to the school, that I should contact her. And I really don't know how to do that in an equitable way. I'm trained and certified in music education through the state of Florida, exceptional education and gifted education, certifiable. And our students that are in the community would like to be in connection with the students that are engaged in music in the public schools, so that they could come together in small ensembles, that we have COVID precautions in place for online instruction, and where they need to have a safe, accessible reading place once or twice a month. And through the rental system, I haven't been able to negotiate that yet. We tried Bonnell Elementary, and they gave us the timeout room first, that had no access, that you couldn't get in it, but they would charge me $50 a month or so, which was a good deal, but I couldn't get into the room, and the students couldn't get into the room. So we have a problem, and I know that you had a workshop today on access. Safety is a concern for everybody, both health-wise, the sheriff, everything like that, so we're looking for some type of space on campus at individual schools after school for about an hour, where the students don't need bust out or taken out of their location, and that we could safely meet, and we'd be happy to pay for. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Oh, since I have a couple seconds left, my specialty in special education, and I've constructed more than 1,000 pieces of curriculum that involve, so a student that can only be helped to play one note, can play in a group with a student that has access to gifted music abilities. And I feel that that's something that still needs more support in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Other public comment?
Seeing none. Board Members, closing comments.
Paul.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald, Ms. Wilbright, Ms. Messero?
I'm sorry.
Well, Ms. Wilbright?
I'm sorry, I do, there, I just want to give my condolences to the family and friends of the family that was in the horrific car accident. They were moving from Flagler County to Volusia County in the mother pass, so, and they were formal Flagler County students.
Thank you. Ms. Messero? Ms. Conklin?
That was, I, I was just gonna reference Chelsea Hawk and, and her family, and her passing, and just keeping them in there, our thoughts and prayers. And I know that we also lost another student, I believe, from Belterra Elementary School in, in accident. So just keep their families in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Ms. Middlestat?
Just to bring it to everyone's awareness, parents, if you're still out there watching students in summer recess, it's almost over. We're getting you back in three weeks. We have teachers back in two weeks. And one thing that I'm really excited about is meeting our new employees and our new teachers. We do have an orientation planned on August 1st and on August 2nd, so excited for that. Thank you.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, everyone, have a good night. Thank you for coming, especially for those who hung in here. With that, thank you, staff, for being here, and have a good night. This meeting is adjourned.